Welcome back, and we staff discussed that we can put off the item G, which is providing direction to staff on the planning process for the Brisbane quarry. Because that is not time sensitive. And I would like to move item D forward because we have members in the audience who'd like to speak on that briefly. So if that's okay with the rest of the council? Then I would like to bring forward item D, considering directing the mayor to send a letter of participation regarding community choice aggregation, which is a local energy model to green power. Staff report?
Yes ma'am, Honorable Mayor, Mayor of the Town Council members, good evening. As you note, the community choice aggregation is an opportunity that was created in California state law back in 2002 that allows cities and counties to aggregate their municipal demands, their residential demands, and their business demands with the opportunity of purchasing clean renewable power. Some complexities with it, and that explains why as of right now there's only two CCAs in the state out of the 58 counties. Marin and Sonoma have them, and I understand that a new one is being developed in Lancaster. So San Mateo County and their Board of Supervisors have decided that they want to investigate the feasibility and the possibility of creating a CCA here. And there's a number of issues that would have to be looked at in the technical study. One of them is going to be, how much load demand is there? And would there be enough demand so that we could successfully go out and purchase renewable power at a reasonable price? Depending upon how much power you're trying to get, sometimes you can get it... When they put together these different portfolios, sometimes they'll offer customers a 50% renewable energy portfolio, which is about 30% higher than what PG&E, for instance, does right now. And that oftentimes, in the examples that we have to the north of us, is actually less than buying that power from PG&E. But then you can, of course, ratchet that up. You can go to 100% renewable power. That typically costs a little bit more. And I believe it's Marin that has the option where you can purchase 100% local power. So lots of different options, lots of different opportunities. I think the important takeaway from the staff report and from the request that we have before you is that all that San Mateo County wants you to do right now is to authorize them to obtain your load information from PG&E so that they can prepare a technical study, and then come back to all the cities and the county as a whole, and say, "Is this something you're interested in pursuing? Here's the data, here's what we've come up with, here's what we think this will mean. Do we want to pursue the next steps?" And with that, I'll be happy to take questions, considering the hour.
Thank you, very nice presentation. Any questions for staff?
I have a comment.
Okay.
Yeah, I actually saw the presentation the other night at the Council of Cities. And Supervisor Carroll Broom and Supervisor Dave Pine were there. And the folks that did the CCA up in Sonoma, Nappan-Sonoma Counties, were there and did a presentation, and it was very good. Actually, that's probably one you saw at C-CAG and the one that was done in South San Francisco and Redwood City. And the only thing was, is they showed all the cities on their climate action plan, and Brisbane showed it didn't have one. And I had to address that with the guy afterwards. And he goes, "I'm really sorry that we had that up there." I said, "Yeah," I said, "you know, there's a reason that we don't have the climate action plan because everybody that's taken money from C-CAG that has done the climate action plan are just blowing smoke with a lot of stuff that's not even real. So we chose not to take the money because we wanted ours to be more real. So we are working on it." And also Supervisor Pine even had said, you know, afterwards, he says, "You know, you guys in Brisbane," he goes, "Sheesh, you might really have the opportunity to go net positive out there on the Baylands." I go, "Wait, Dave, welcome to the... Welcome to the crowd." Anyway, so, you know, I certainly support this, and that's my comment. You know, I would make a motion to authorize the mayor to do the letter that's part of our packet and send off to the supervisor for this. So I have no questions. Second?
Yeah, I would... Go ahead, Laurie.
I just was going to also comment that I attended the meeting, and I was very impressed by the presentation by people from Marin. And they did have some data from Brisbane. I'm not sure it was accurate about the sites that we have, the brownfield sites. So I think our staff is going to be maybe contacting them with the corrections to that. But, and also Supervisor Pine had mentioned to me at another time, the potential for Brisbane. So, you know, not only that would, you know, being a positive thing, but, you know, just the idea of providing consumers more choice. And really, there's no downside to going forward with it. There's no... The whole reason if, you know, a JPA were to be set up, as they did in Marin, it kind of shields the cities from any fiscal responsibilities. And if it needed to be unwound, you know, it could just go back to having PG&E provide the service. And all of the revenues in the first couple of years are basically going to cover... This is what they told us, that it would basically cover all the upfront costs of doing these feasibility studies. So in the end, the county would be made whole. So I'm really excited about exploring the community choice aggregate.
Yeah, I just wanted to reaffirm my support for this. And I've also been to a number of meetings, actually over the last year or so. You may remember, I reported on that conference in Sacramento in the summer. And a couple of sessions there were on the CCAs. And the people from Sonoma, who've really done an outstanding job in their county, were there as well. And then I also attended a Sierra Club presentation, which included people from Marin and also from... There's some other cities like Palo Alto and Sunnyvale and so forth that are very interested in this. I think San Francisco actually is now going to move ahead. I mean, the voter's passed it, and there's been some resistance from their Utilities Commission and from the mayor. But from what I've read recently, that's all turned around. So I think San Francisco's going ahead as well. So, and I've also heard... My wife is on a statewide group that talks about promoting CCAs. And there's a lot of interest in Southern California, too, as well as Lancaster, San Diego County, and so forth. So it's really sort of a statewide movement that's really happening. And I'm pleased to see that San Mateo County is getting in on it. And I think we probably could have, you know, a lot of local energy generation, which would be, you know, better than just buying something from someplace else.
So I have one slip from a member of the public who'd like to speak. So Barbara, would you like to come up?
I would like to thank the council for putting all the interesting stuff on one night, because I don't always make it down here. And just in case I don't get back for the next time you guys talk about this, I kind of want to rant a little bit. Forgive me for that. I want to encourage the council to pursue this with my whole heart. Some things, like the Bay Shore School District merger, didn't work out, and maybe this won't work out either. But after going through the Berkeley and Sonoma County climate action plans and seeing their process, and the numbers involved, and the scope involved, I truly personally feel, and I'm not saying this is a member of OSEC, but I truly personally feel that we cannot reach sustainability without taking control of our energy production. And so I feel a CCA is not only important to the consumers, but also terribly, terribly important to our future as a species on this planet. And I also want to encourage you guys to pursue this as aggressively and rapidly as you can because there are groups and interests out there that are working on chipping away at the CCA program. So I just wanted to say, please, 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 you know, push this along. You know, make sure, you know, once you've made sure it's going to work out, just push everything along as fast as you can. And I certainly hope it works out. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. So I'm also very excited about this, and I hope that we can move it forward and get it off the ground as quickly as we can.
We have a motion in a second.
We have a motion in a second. So any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Seeing none? Thank you. And that brings us to item B, the Consider Adoption Resolution 2015-04, to set up a trust with PARS for OPEB liability. And I will let Stuart talk about the acronyms.
Sure.
Other Post-Employment Benefits.
Yes. OPEB, OPEB, is Other Post-Employment Benefits. PARS is the Public Agency Retirement System, not to be confused with PERS. This is an item that I brought forward on December 18th last year. The city council directed me to work with PARS to develop the documents that were needed to set up a trust. At that time, we were looking at contributing $500,000 from general fund reserves. As Betsy had mentioned tonight, we had a surplus last year. Going through the analysis of how the Other Post-Employment Benefits were actually developed, who the liabilities belong to, there's actually... It's based off of people's work and how much we owe them in their retirement for the supplemental stipend and for health insurance. As I explained last time, the health insurance comes from the PERS system, and then the supplemental stipend is from the contracts that were signed in 2001 and 2002. And we have limited that amount going into supplemental stipend for new employees starting in 2008. That was all in the December 14th staff report. Just wanted to go through that really quickly. If we were to put $500,000 into the trust, my recommendation is it would be broken down. $33,500 would come from the utility fund. $57,500 would come from the marina, and $409,000 would come from the general fund. This is based on the employees who work in those different funds and what we owe them in their post-retirement time. All these funds have that money available for them. So that would be the recommendation at this time, is to put that money into the trust, to adopt the resolution. And I've also included the trust agreement, so you could see what the trust agreement was. Hopefully, that was quick enough and informative enough for people.
Thank you. Ray, do you have any questions?
Of course, I was part of the Finance Committee that has the background and went along with the recommendation of the Finance Director. So I'm very much on board with this approach. But there was one new thing, and I wonder if you'd just speak to that. And that is divvying up the $500,000 between different funds.
Sure.
And that's kind of the only thing...
That is...
That's new to me, anyway.
That is new. We did not talk about that at the last meeting. So the Other Post-Employment Benefit is based on people working for the city. And the cost of an employee is borne by the fund where that employee works. If you work in the water and sewer division, you are paid for out of the utility fund. If you work at the marina, you are paid for out of the marina fund. That's part of how we... Part of the budget, part of cost allocation. So the cost of a retired person from the marina fund, their retire... Their costs in retirement should be borne by the marina fund because, in theory, we should have paid for this portion of the cost while they were working, similar to how we pay for PERS in their regular retirement. So what I went through was determined how many people were in the different funds, what program they were under, whether they were just under the PERS health insurance only, whether they were part of the supplemental stipend. If they were part of the supplemental stipend, whether or not they were getting, as a general employee, just their own health insurance, or for others, it would be for their themselves and their family. I went through all that to determine who owes which percentage based on how much we need to put aside. I've given you the percentages of the different funds. The utility fund is 6.7%. The marina fund is 11.5%, and the general fund is 81.8%. As you know, the bulk of our employees are in the general fund. But, you know, if you think about the marina fund, we have a retired harbor or director of marina services who is paid for out of the marina fund. We have a police officer who is paid for out of the marina fund. We have a number... A couple of maintenance workers who are paid out of the marina fund. In the utility fund, we have a number of maintenance workers who have retired. So that's how I came up with that... Those percentages.
Thanks.
And part of the budget going forward will be covering the normal cost. And I'll talk about that whole exciting idea of how to come up with normal cost going forward as I do the budget for you. Because we don't want to get put in the same position in the future.
Right. That's it?
Cliff?
No, Stuart said it all.
Okay. Laurie?
No questions.
Clark?
Motion to adopt Resolution Number 2015-04 to set up a trust with PARS for our OPEB liability.
Okay, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No opposed? Item C, I am sure that we can get a quick introduction to Ordinance 592 waiving the first reading, amending Chapter 15.56 of the Brisbane Municipal Code regarding floodplain management.
Ma'am, I just assumed that the council went through the OPEB PARS issue so quickly because you wanted to make sure I had plenty of time to talk about floodplain management. But good evening, thank you once again. When I met with the Facility Subcommittee a few weeks ago, I used what's now become a somewhat famous quote by Mr. Marshawn Lynch, leading up to the Super Bowl, when he went to this press conference and said, "I'm only here so I don't get fined." And that's very much the way I feel about this. "I'm only here so the city doesn't get fined." This is one of those issues where, in order for the city to stay in compliance with the National Flood Insurance Plan so that our businesses that are in designated flood zones can get flood insurance, we have to make the changes that the FEMA reviewers ask us to do. The changes in here are not earth-shattering. They don't change flood zones. They don't change anybody's insurance rates. They just keep us in the good graces of FEMA, and they keep us in the National Flood Insurance Plan. So I'd be happy to take questions on any of those.
Motion to introduce Ordinance 592 waiving first reading, amending Chapter 15.56 of the Brisbane Municipal Code concerning floodplain management.
Second.
Any discussion?
The only thing I wanted to point out, and we had this discussion at the subcommittee level, is that this is only for flood events. And it's interesting that FEMA doesn't seem to be interested in this particular set of principles and guidance and rules and regulations. They don't seem to be interested in sea level rise, which is kind of an interesting policy decision on their part. And so this ordinance will not address those issues at all.
Absolutely correct, sir. Thank you for bringing that up. FEMA has decided that we're only going to do modeling based on today, based on what we know and what we can confirm. And even though they don't disagree with sea level rise, they don't disagree with climate change because they can't pinpoint the number and be very accurate scientists and engineers about it, they don't take it into their considerations.
Use old data.
Right.
So we've got... Any members of the public who'd like to speak on this? Seeing no show of hands and having a motion in a second, we'll call for all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, we will move on to item E, which is to consider financing options for dredging of the Brisbane Marina.
Yes. The city council, in their budget, adopted the money to do the study for the dredging project. The study is ongoing, and it's been determined... And let me just update the staff report a little. The last number I've heard is it will be... The dredging project will be about $3.9 million. My numbers were based on 3.8, but I... The new number is rate of about 3.9. Doesn't have a major impact on any of the numbers that I'm showing you. $100,000 to be borrowed is not going to have an impact over the 12... Over the 12 years that we'd be borrowing money. Dredging projects last somewhere in the 12- to 15-year timeframe. It's been about 15 years since we dredged last time, and as you know, we need to do it again. So we probably should really plan on 12-year schedules. So we're looking at borrowing money only for the length of the time that the dredging would last, which would be about 12 years. The cost, there's about... If we were to borrow $3.9 million, the cost of issuance would be still rate around that $116,000 mark. So we'd have a bond issue of slightly over $4 million instead of slightly over 3.9. The annual cost of the bond is still going to be in the $450,000 range. It might go up to $455,000, $458,000. So it's still rate in that... Still in that same ballpark, depending on interest rates. The amount of money that we currently take in on slip fees, which is the revenue... The major revenue source for the marina is about $1.4 million a year. So in order to pay for a bond issue, that would cost us about $450,000. We would need about, rate around a 30% rate increase. And that would give us the coverage that people would want to have. The coverage is the amount of money you have in above expenses, operating expenses, and above the bond payment to be able to make sure you have the bond payment. They would... Bond buyers like to make sure you have about a 50% cushion of your bond payment. And then you get to use that 50% for whatever other purpose you would like during the year. You just need to show it at the time of the budget. So that's the reason we're looking for a 30% rate increase. The method that the city is looking to bond is to capitalize the interest in the first two years while the dredging project is going on. So that means we will not be making any principal payments. So that reduces the amount of the bond payment to only the interest amount for the first two years. When we first looked at it, and we presented it to the Facility Subcommittee, we recommended that we capitalize the interest into the bond payment, which would increase the amount of money that would need to be paid from the marina fund. What that would do is require us to have a 15% rate increase upfront. And then the 30% could happen over the next... The rest of the 30% would happen over the next two years. The Facility Subcommittee said that does not make a lot of sense. If you're not doing the project, you should try and reduce that upfront percentage. And it would make more sense if you do a 10%, a 10%, and a 10% increase. I went back to our financial advisor, Marty Johnson, on that. And what he recommended that we do, if we wanted to do a 10%, 10%, 10% rate increase, was to pay for the capitalized interest from another source of money. And that source of money would be the general fund. So what the city... What we would recommend is that the city pay the first two years of interest from the general fund and loan that to the marina fund. And then as the... After the 30% is in place, in the third year, after the dredging is all completed, we would then repay the general fund out of that coverage portion that we would be required to have anyway. So there would be no additional need to increase the rates to repay the general fund. So we would be able to do all this with three sets of 10% rate increases, and that would pay for the dredging project. And as I've talked about over many different bond issues with the city council, the bond issue would be paid for during the time that the dredging was useful. So those people who are getting the benefit of the dredging, in fact, pay for the dredging on a year-by-year basis while they're there. We're not asking for people to pay for it all upfront. So therefore, if you moved out of your slip halfway through, you were paying for a portion of the dredging that you didn't use. So while you're there, you're using all... You're using the dredging project. I think that covers all of the interesting things. The other aspect is to recognize that this 30% increase pays for the bond issue. And it doesn't pay, you know, does not cover any increases to operating costs due to inflation or other needs that the marina may have over the next 12 years. So this is not going... This will not be the only... I would project not the only rate increase marina slip owners would have over the next 12 years. There may be other rate increases due to operational increases.
But we do have that chart that shows where the rates for the Brisbane Marina are relative to others.
Yes. I have included a chart, and my screen just went black. Oh, that's why hard copies work so much better. So even with the 30% rate increase, we will be below the median of the other...
Below the median, below the...
Will be above the... Slightly above the median, but below the average of the marinas along the bay. This chart was put together by our public works director, person in charge, you know, the director in charge of the marina. So we will not be above... You know, we're not going to be above average for marinas on the bay, even with the 30% rate increase.
Yeah, but ma'am, it's also the case that we're talking about the 30% over three years.
Correct.
And during the course of three years, we can anticipate that some of the rates in other places will go up as well, so...
Yes. So we may still be... Come back below the median again over that period of time.
Do you have any questions?
Yes, I do, Madam Mayor. So, okay, so originally, you were going to recommend that we increase the rates by 15%?
In the first year, and then seven and a half, and seven and a half in the next two...
That was the original...
That was the recommendation to the Facility Subcommittee.
Subcommittee. And then, and by doing it that way, that then there wasn't going to be that additional money that would need to come...
We would not need to borrow money from the general fund.
The general fund would not have to lend money for this.
Right. But what the concern of the Facility Subcommittee was that we would be looking for a 15% rate increase prior to any of the dredging starting. So that seemed like a fairly significant increase. It's half the increase that you were going to have to pay before the dredging project started. What they were... What the Facility Subcommittee was recommending that, you know, as small of a portion of that increase happened in the first year before the project starts, and then as the project gets completed, more of that increase happens. And then in the third year, when the project is completely done, the full rate is in place.
Okay. And then...
Hopefully I...
Yeah, and you explain how...
I'll phrase this correctly.
So if you could just explain again how the money would be repaid back to the general fund?
It will be repaid out of marina slip fees. So one of the requirements of the bond is that we have cover... We have 50% coverage of the bond payment. So if there is a $450,000 a year bond payment, we need to have $225,000 available in revenues above bond payment and above operating expenses.
Okay.
So that money that becomes available due to coverage can then be used to repay the general fund.
Yeah, okay. Because that's a requirement?
Yes.
Okay.
Otherwise, we would not be able to get a 3% rate.
Okay. And then because of the timeline that is recommended for dredging in the future, so is this... Are you kind of proposing that this be the standard and that once, you know, 12, 13 or so years from now, we just go back to doing a similar...
We would do a similar type of bond. And the rate, you know, borrowing any large increases in the cost of dredging, or any large increase in interest rates, the rate... The cost to pay back the bond would be already incorporated in the slip fees.
Yes.
So we would not really need a larger... Another significant increase, hopefully, barring no economic disasters, to pay for the next dredging, similar to what we talked about with the water and sewer bonds, as you create a capital charge on the water and sewer rate. And then every 20 years, you still use that same... That same charge to redo another bond.
Okay. And if there... If there wasn't a bond, you know, and you didn't have to pay the interest, you know, to cover the cost of dredging, what would be that increase in... Hey, I'm putting you on the spot. I'm sure you didn't think about that. But, you know, is it a significant amount of additional percentage that you have to apply to the slip fees in order to cover the interest? I'm just thinking, you know, if there was something like in the future...
Right. I mean, what you would have is probably, instead of a $450,000 a year cost, you might be, you know... know, I'm just thinking 3.8 million divided by 12, you're probably in the $320,000 range. 320,000 times 12, I think gets us up to somewhere close to 3.8 off the top of my head, not using a calculator.
Okay.
Um, so it's probably about a hundred thousand dollar a year that we're going to be paying in interest.
Interest.
But then you get to the next question, which is what's the value of inflation?
Yeah, sure.
I mean, if, you know, right now inflation is running at 2.6% a year, you know, if inflation runs at 3% a year, you're actually borrowing the money with, for no money.
Yes. And, you know, and I also like the notion of the people who are, who have their boats at the Marina, they are the ones that are paying it for every year that they are there. And that seems to be the fair and equitable way to, to go about covering the costs. So, all right, no, I, 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 I like the recommendations that you guys had proposed to, to staff.
Lori?
I don't have any questions, but I, I agree. I like the idea of having just 10% in the beginning so that the people with boats out there feel like they're not paying for something that they're not getting a benefit out of. I think it's important to have that project go forward as they're, you know, paying into it essentially, so.
Look.
No, I don't have any questions. I'm probably the one making the recommendation, but, you know, being a boat owner, I feel like I'm holding a gun to my head too, but, you know, I know it needs to be done. Kind of funny that 10% falls actually on the same line as the 15% as far as where it rates, the ranking or rating and then the blank spaces where the next 10% would be. So, anyway. It's a must do.
It is a must do. I just want the, in my opinion, that, you know, we, we didn't do the dredging for 15 years and so we put out, we have a lot of deferred maintenance out there as far as silt. And so during that time, profits that came from the Marina were put into our park and recreation departments. So the city has been gaining benefits and I think it's only fair that the city to, to help get this moving forward, absorb some of the upfront costs and some of the upfront rates because it'll be a lot easier for the boaters to accept a smaller rate at the beginning while they're not seeing any benefit and they're still getting stuck in the mud. And then they're going to have to be putting up with construction and dredging the actual operations going on and the inconvenience to their boats for that. I think that most of them know that they have a good benefit and that they have a good Marina, a well-run, clean Marina. And that for them, I, I think that the rate increase will be tolerable for most. And so I think that, that not raising the rates right out, you know, higher at the beginning is a better idea in, from what I've heard. We do have the harbor master here tonight and I'm wondering if he wanted to address the council or Or our boating community?
Not only the harbor master, Madam Mayor, but I have a boat there too. And so I'll be absorbing this, this increase. I just want to make an important point and that is that right away, as we begin the project, we'll be starting in the channel and working our way back into the Marina. So every boat in the Marina is going to immediately realize the benefit within the first couple of months, this project, because the worst part of the Marina is right outside the entrance. That's where the hump is. So right away, we're going to realize an immediate benefit to every boat that comes and goes, especially the deep draft vessels like mine that draw five to six feet. I've been stuck multiple times, even if the tide is right. So this will immediately develop a huge amount of support, especially from the larger boats on dock one. Those folks being the folks who have perhaps more money in the water, so to speak. And I think that they're, they tend to be also members of the yacht club. And there's a lot of support, there's a ground swell and the folks that come in the office have made it quite clear that they're very happy with the, the dredge proceeding. So I am anticipating some dialogue over the rate increase. I'm ready to address that and I'm very happy to represent the position of the city in that we provide a very good value and we're happy to serve you in any way we can during this time of inconvenience. And we're here to address any questions or needs you may have during that time. So all in all, I believe it's going to be a very positive project. And once the dredge is begun and certainly once it's completed, will be a much more desirable destination Marina in the Bay Area. And I've had my boat in many different locations and I can say this is a fine Marina. So that's all I have to say.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments or discussions or questions for staff?
Let me make a motion to direct staff to bring back a resolution to increase rates as we discussed for the Marina slips in order to pay for the dredging.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that passes? Thank you. Oh my goodness, we're getting to the, to the end.
Yeah, motion to extend the meeting to 11:15. That includes a successor agency.
Let's do it to 11.
Okay.
And then we'll have time for the successor agency.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, city managers report on upcoming activities?
We may have a need to have a closed session, but I still need to confer with the city attorney. This is kind of relates to the conversation that city clerk needs to have with you with regards to the applications for the Parks and Recreation Commission. So we were thinking potentially that if, if we do have a closed session and the interviews, we might want to just do that in one night and have it as a off council night. We probably, if we're going to do the closed session, it's related to a project that I think we would want to get information to you before the end of the calendar month, the end of February. So it would have to be sometime in the next couple of weeks.
We got a meeting in two weeks.
Yeah, but, well, I mean, we, we could do that. We could do it before the meeting. I, I think we'd have to check with Lori's schedule and I do think that that's probably going to be an hour to an hour and a half closed session.
And then we also have the, the
The interviews.
The interviews.
Yeah.
So we need a full evening.
Right.
If we were to do them on the
Yeah, I mean, one, one
Same night.
If you're going to do it the same night. So one thought would be to just establish a night to do, to do all that and we would set up the interviews at 7:30. And then if we are going to do the closed session, we would do that at earlier, at 6 o'clock or depending on, I know Lori's looking at
Yeah, no, my husband's on call that day, so I need to check with him. It just means
Two weeks from now?
On the, I think we're looking at the 19th.
Well, that would be one potential date. I think we were also looking at potentially Tuesday, the 17th.
The 19th, isn't that the, that is the
The regular council
Regular council meeting.
Oh, we were looking at a separate meeting, you're saying, just, okay.
But if, if, if you are available, Lori, on the 19th, we could certainly do the closed session that evening if, if indeed we're going to be able to do it.
How long would it?
I, I think it's probably going to be an hour to an hour and a half.
For the closed session?
Yeah, so it'd be 6 o'clock.
Yeah, no, I can't. My husband has to stay, on his on-call, he has to stay at the hospital until at least 5:30. So we wouldn't be able to start until 7 at the earliest and that would be pushing it, so.
Yeah, that, that would be pushing it. So
What's the agenda look like that
Maybe we should do it on Tuesday then.
Um, I don't know yet.
Well, isn't the 19, the 19th is our regular meeting?
Correct.
Okay, so that's not the CCG night?
Next week is CCG.
I would suggest doing it on a different night than a council meeting night.
Would the 17th, Tuesday, the 17th work? And, and if it does
I'm pretty sure that's okay for me.
How, how early can we, how early could we do?
I think we kind of went round and round with Wendy on that today.
The 17th?
Yeah.
I don't recall discussing the evening of the 17th though.
No, it was
Daytime.
Daytime.
Yeah.
Yeah. I can do that nighttime at 17th.
We start at 7:30? Or would, would that be enough time?
Well, if we did 7:30, we could probably do your interviews first, you know, for convenience of the applicant.
Could 7 work? Just gives us a little bit more time.
Why don't we schedule it for 7 and I'll double check with my husband tomorrow.
So we would, we would do the interviews first and then as soon as you're done with the interviews, we can go into closed session. And again, that's tentative. So it could, it could be if you're interview, four interviews, 15 minutes roughly, five interviews, okay. So figure maybe
Hour and a half.
Hour and a half. So that gets you to 8:30, a little bit of a break. Well, we could be done by 10, I think.
That's fine with me. I would just ask, I'm going to be out that weekend before, so if we, if we could get whatever staff report there is for the closed session, I would need to have it, well, if it's, I'm not going to really have time to work on it. I could get it by email, but ideally by the Thursday before the 12th. Would that be possible?
Isn't that a holiday? Lincoln's birthday?
Yeah, I mean, we could probably try to get it out on the 11th.
Okay. Yeah, I can stop by.
So we're going to tentative schedule for 7 PM on the 17th?
Correct.
When is the goal setting workshop?
St. Patrick's night.
St. Patrick's. Okay. So a month.
A month.
After this one. Okay.
So the 17th is for goal setting. Cause I had a different date on that. That was on the second, but that's, we changed it. Is that correct?
Correct. March 17th and you'll have your packet by March 6.
I drug it to the right spot.
Stuart's got an announcement.
So we loaned our pool to Mythbusters to do a project and that will be airing February 6th, Saturday night. And I think at the time is 7 or 7:30.
Oh, this coming Saturday night?
Yes, this coming Saturday night, our pool will be featured in the Mythbusters TV show.
And is that on our website? I think that might be perky news that Carolyn could put out that might
We'll, we will send that out. We'll send that out.
Definitely, yeah.
My granddaughters keep asking me, is that show yet?
It has not. It will be showing Saturday night.
They like to watch it too.
Will that be available online or just, what channel is it on?
Discovery Channel.
Okay.
It's also the artist evening of sharing.
You're right. And my wife is doing that that night.
Yep.
And I guess I know it'll be
She's reading.
She's reading. I'll, I'll be, no, it's the 7th. I think it's, I think it's the 7th though.
Yeah, and I think that's something we should mention, the artist evening of sharing this coming Saturday night at the Mission Blue Center at 7:30 PM. Our lovely Beth Grossman will be hosting it again. And it's always very entertaining and free and open to all of the Mission Blue Center. Any other reports from the city manager?
No.
And this includes the city clerk's application status or did you want to make a report on that?
I did email everyone this afternoon. I'm not, as long as you all got it and realized that there's four applicants for Parks and Rec and then one for the Complete Street Safety Committee. That's all I really had to report.
And then anyone who would like to make council subcommittee quick report?
Yeah, I have, did this real quick. So last night we had SFO roundtable meeting. I'm not going to go into too much detail because what I'd like to do is be able to present at our next meeting, a little slideshow that SFO roundtable staff had presented. And it's, it, it will be very helpful to just give the council and, and I'd like to, you know, maybe perhaps, you know, show it on the screen so folks at home can see it too, what the new RNAF flight procedures look like and, you know, what to expect. The, this one procedure that causes a lot of problems for us is the port departure that's being phased out for the new stick. That procedure was just implemented January 8th. Everyone was hoping that it was gonna, you know, change things. Unfortunately, they've only done about 5% of the flights using that procedure. And so people were feeling, you know, I had a meeting on Monday night. I came home from that trip Sunday evening. I had a meeting on Monday. It actually was a great meeting and we spent a couple hours in the conference room and there's 15 people there. And so, yes, 5% of the flights since that implementation of the new procedure have only been that new procedure. But, yeah, I won't go into any more detail. I'd rather show you in the slideshow and it'd be much more easy to follow. So that's the only report.
And on economic development, we had a field trip a week or so ago down to Redwood City and San Mateo. We got to meet with the planning staff there and learned a little about their downtown precise plan and they took us on a tour of their downtown to see what sorts of buildings they're doing and, you know, what went into that plan. And then we got a chance to also go to San Mateo and look at Bay Meadows. They're in the process of constructing the residential units there, which are approximately the same square footage of what we're looking at, at for zoning of Southeast Crocker, the 20 to 25 square feet, right, figures and, per acre. And so it was interesting to just get a perspective of, you know, what a development of that density would look like. And then we also had an, I think we had, did we have an economic development subcommittee meeting the, the day before?
We did, looking at the beautification of
That's right.
Entryway to Brisbane.
Right. So we, we went and looked at the entryway project and, which would be at the corner of Visitation and Bay Shore. And gave some input into, there was a, like an architectural proposal and so we gave some input and they're going to come back and, you know, show us, you know, maybe a little bit more of what we, what, what at least I had in mind. And then we looked at the teen center, you know, for the library issue, which we discussed tonight. And then also this past week, I got to go down with city staff down to Santa Clara to the state, the, the State of the Valley Annual Conference. And that was pretty fascinating. I particularly liked the talk about energy innovation and how the valley and, you know, in general, the Bay Area has really a great opportunity to be the next area for energy innovation, just as, you know, it has been known for being Silicon Valley in the computer world, how we have the opportunity to have private industry work with, with government and also universities to really create a dynamic opportunity for renewable energy production.
Evolving. No, I said it's evolving. Facility Subcommittee, everything was on the agenda tonight, so.
Right.
It was.
And it's been passed.
Yeah.
The work is done.
So with that, there's oral communications number two and there are no members of the public in the audience. So I'd like to adjourn the meeting and go to a successor agency meeting if we have a motion in a second.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So do we need to wait a couple of minutes for a tape to change?